Council meeting for August 13th. Roll call, please.
Prior to roll call, I would like to make an announcement that due to technical issues, this meeting will not be livestreamed on YouTube or Zoom this evening. However, the recording of the meeting will be available on the city's YouTube channel tomorrow morning. Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
Councilmember Veroce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
And Mayor Hudson?
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item three announcements, 3.1, changes and additions to the agenda. There are none this evening. Item 3.2, if you would like to speak under public comment, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and please bring it forward. Item four, public comment.
Okay, public comment is open. This is a time for anyone to address the council on any item not on the agenda or that is on the consent calendar. If we have any, do we have any speaker cards?
I do have one request to speak from Shiraz.
Shiraz.
Hi. Come on up to the podium.
The floor is yours.
Mayor Hudson, councilmembers, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Shiraz Balla-Pitula. I am here speaking on behalf of Basketball Without Boundaries Day. Non, oh, it wasn't on. I actually didn't see that. I'm terribly sorry. Okay, this is going to be on YouTube, so that's a little embarrassing.
Just don't tell us you're in tech.
Yeah, I'm not, fortunately. I'll start again. Mayor Hudson, councilmembers, thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Shiraz Balla-Pitula. I am speaking on behalf of Basketball Without Boundaries, a nonprofit organization/startup that is operating in the Windermere Ranch area. The goal of this organization is to provide basketball equipment abroad through a charity for individuals who are not able to normally purchase basketball equipment. Currently, this organization is doing a pilot initiative in, at Windermere Ranch Middle School on their basketball courts. However, they do not have the availability or the awareness to the public that they would like. As of now, they are only expecting a few individuals to show up. Now, when I spoke with the representatives, they said they would be satisfied if at least 20 people showed up. However, I do believe that more can be made available for them to help individuals out in learning basketball as well as potentially donating to their charity abroad. So I would like to humbly request the city if there would be a possibility of spreading awareness of this basketball camp, which is taking place on August 18th at Windermere Ranch Middle School. Mr. Rose, Councilmember Rose has the material. I provided that to you earlier today, a flyer on through SMS. Sorry, unfortunately, I did not really know the rules of, you know, sharing material beforehand, so only Mr. Rose has it. But I would like to request the city to review this and potentially make available any awareness for this camp before its scheduled occurrence on August 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can't discuss it now if it isn't on the agenda, but someone from staff or one of us will follow up on this. We just can't do it unless it's censitized on the topic tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor Hudson.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, or do we have another?
That was the only request to speak on this item.
Okay, and I left some written comments for you on your desk, but we won't go through that. We'll close the public comment. Next item, please.
Item five, consent calendar.
Okay, do we have any consent calendar items? A general routine in nature and acted upon by a single motion. Anybody wishing to pull an item?
No.
I move the, I move the consent calendar.
All second.
Okay, further discussion? Any? Seeing none, we'll vote.
There's no button. I don't have a button.
You don't have a button?
No.
She, there's a connection issue.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
This is going to be one of those nights, folks, just hanging here with us.
I'll get it.
Okay, looks like it's pretty unanimous to me.
Well, or not.
Or not. Thank you. Next item, please.
Do you want us to take a verbal or a oral vote? Oh, we got it, okay.
Okay, next item, please.
Item six, special presentation, 6.1, proclamation recognizing the San Ramon Valley Islamic Center and the San Ramon American Muslim community for their contributions to the San Ramon community.
Thank you. Come up, please.
Speaker's not on, Scott. Speaker's not on. Down at the base.
There we go. Got it. Thank you. All right. Okay. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of San Ramon recognizing the San Ramon Valley Islamic Center and the San Ramon American Muslim community for their contributions to the San Ramon community. Whereas freedom of religion holds a distinction, distinction as a tourist and essential right and fundamental value upon which this nation was founded. And whereas Muslims have been a part of U.S. history from the beginning and have contributed to the production of wealth and construction of the nation, they are also part of the rich history of the civil rights movement. And whereas Muslims are teachers, lawyers, doctors, social workers, tech workers, nurses, business owners, among numerous other valued professions, as well as peace builders, activists, entrepreneurs, and politicians. And whereas there is a thriving community of 250,000 Muslims in the Bay Area and over 100 mosques and religious centers, and Muslims pursue diverse professions and make the rich contributions to the social, cultural, economic vibrancy of the United States and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect and understanding among all people through faith and services. And whereas the San Ramon Valley Islamic Center in partnership with Support Life Foundation and 47 other Bay Area mosques and organizations have packed and distributed over 100,000 pounds of food staples to at-risk communities in the Bay Area through their You Are Not Alone program. San Ramon Valley Islamic Center has held blood drives with the American Red Cross. The San Ramon Valley Islamic Center is one of the largest donors to the Contra Costa Food Bank, donating $30,000 to $35,000 every year, in addition to $500,000 in donations to Contra Costa resident Muslim families in need. And whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the myriad of invaluable contributions of Muslims in California and across the country, and extend to them the respect and camaraderie every person deserves. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of San Ramon does hereby recognize the California State designation of August 2024 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month to acknowledge the rich history, contributions, and guiding virtues of Muslims and to commend all Muslim communities in California for the lasting positive impact they have made towards the advancement of our city and country. Dated August 13th, 2024, signed David E. Hudson, Mayor. Thank you very much. Welcome to the state.
Honorable Mayor Hudson, the City Council members, city officials, and our esteemed community members, once again, we thank you for recognizing San Ramon Valley Islamic Center in this significant time of Muslim Proclamation Month. Assalamualaikum. I represent, I'm here on the behalf of the board representing with immense pride and gratitude for this recognition. This occasion not only marks a celebration of the rich culture and religious diversity within our community, but also serves as a reminder of the unity that binds us together, regardless of our backgrounds, where we came from. Especially now, it's important when there is so much divisiveness out there. For over 30 years now, San Ramon Valley Islamic Center has been a cornerstone of our community's social fabric. Its commitment to fostering understanding, compassion, and support for all residents, regardless of faith, is nothing short of exemplary. Through its numerous initiatives that was just spoken about, SRVIC has continuously worked to build bridges between different communities, ensuring that every voice is heard and respected, and the Muslims in the community are the social fabric of where they belong. Muslim Proclamation Month is more than a recognition of the Islamic faith. It is a celebration of the shared values that unite us, values such as justice, charity, and the pursuit of peace. These are essential to Muslims, and SRVIC holds them dearly to their heart. SRVIC, over the years, has embodied these principles through its tireless efforts in providing essential services, promoting interfaith dialogue, which happens quite a lot, and nurturing the next generation of leaders, which is really important right now as, as we bring up our second and third generation children in the United States of America, the leaders who will continue to carry forward these ideals. Today, we honor not just an organization, but a vision, a vision where diversity is seen as a strength and where every individual is valued for their unique contributions to the community. SRVIC's impact is felt far beyond the walls of its own institution. It resonates in the lives of the families it supports, testament to the fact Mayor Hudson remembers, you know, after 9/11, how the community came together, and we also thank this city to be supporting us throughout our tenure here. As we move forward, let us take this opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to the ideals that SRVIC upholds. Let us continue to work together in this spirit of cooperation and mutual respect, ensuring that our city remains a beacon of inclusivity and harmony for all its residents. In the closing, I extend my heartfelt thanks to SRVIC, the board members and the trustees who are here, and the community members for their unwavering dedication to our community. May this recognition serve as a reminder of the positive change that is possible when we come together in the spirit of unity and understanding. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you. And as he said, City Hall and the Islamic Center used to share the same parking lot. They must be ecstatic about having us get out of there.
He was interesting on some Friday meetings.
Okay. Next item. Thank you, Scott.
Item 6.2, proclamation declaring August 21st, 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day.
And here we are. Thank you for coming. Let me read the proclamation. We'll give you a few minutes to speak here. Let's see, proclamation of the City Council of the City of San Ramon declaring August 21st, 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day. Whereas on August 19, 1988, President Reagan signed proclamation 5847 declaring August 21st as National Senior Citizens Day. And whereas on August 21st, communities across the United States will join together to recognize National Senior Citizens Day. And whereas 17% of all San Ramon residents are ages 60 and over and contribute to the vitality of the San Ramon community. Whereas seniors in San Ramon are present in all aspects of our lives, they are our parents, grandparents, our teachers, volunteers, mentors, neighbors, and coworkers and friends. And whereas this population continues to enrich our daily lives, providing a fine example of responsibility, resourcefulness, and determination. And whereas San Ramon honors and celebrates the contributions of the senior foundation and senior volunteers for the efforts to continually improve the lives of all seniors in San Ramon through programs, events, and support of the Alcosta Senior and Community Center. Whereas every day, seniors right here in San Ramon make a big difference, and we value them, their input, their contributions for making San Ramon such a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of San Ramon does hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 21st, 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day in the City of San Ramon. We urge all citizens to observe this day by increasing community awareness, strengthening services, and celebrating the seniors in their lives and relish in the experiences and knowledge a senior can share. Dated August 13th, 2024, signed Mayor David Hudson. Thank you very much, senior mayor. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hudson. Councilmembers, thank you Vice Mayor Perkins for the proclamation on National Senior Citizens Day. Tonight, we are here to recognize a very special segment of our community, our senior citizens. The senior citizen community in San Ramon makes a significant impact on our city, and we deeply value their contributions and the vital role they play in making San Ramon such a great place. Their wisdom, experience, and volunteerism have enriched our community in countless ways. We are truly fortunate to have such an active senior population participating in our city. San Ramon senior citizens embody the spirit of giving, helping to make San Ramon the vibrant and welcoming community we all cherish. And it is my honor to have Angela Cotton here with the San Ramon Senior Center Foundation, who is also with me to receive the National Senior Citizens Day proclamation. Angela.
Okay, is it on? Okay. I am a senior citizen as, sorry, I am a senior citizen. I retired from my position in Southern California and moved to San Ramon to be close to my family, my son and daughter and their families, and my grandchildren. I've always volunteered, whether it be for my children, through my work, professional organizations. And so when we moved to San Ramon, I became involved and went to the, you know, visit the San Ramon Community and Senior Center. I joined the boutique, which is knitting, crocheting, that type of thing. And then I got involved with the foundation. I've been a member of the foundation for seven years. I served as, I was recruited right away as a recordings secretary because that was my position throughout my career. And recently, I was elected as president. So anyway, so my, I have a two-year term as president. I thoroughly enjoy working with the seniors and all that the foundation does for the community. We raise funds. We raise funds to help improve the community and senior center through different events throughout the year. I'm sure that you all know the events that we hold. They are advertised quite freely, and we encourage you all to attend as many as you can and help improve the senior center. It's a wonderful place. If you haven't visited, please do. Great staff. Steve is the manager of the facility, so I encourage you all to attend. And all of us, all of you, at some point in your life will become a senior. So volunteer, it's a great way to become involved, meet people, help. So thank you. This is an honor to me. Thank you.
Proclamation, item 6.3, proclamation declaring August 31st, 2024 as International Overdose Awareness Day.
Whereas the City of San Ramon does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by fatal drug overdose. Whereas we recognize the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day is to be, it is to remember loved ones lost to overdose, to support those left behind, and to end the stigma surrounding substance use disorder and substance-related deaths. Whereas we resolve to play our part in preventing substance use disorder and overdose in our community. And whereas we recognize that those lost to overdose are children, parents, siblings, and friends, and those they have left behind are deserving of our love, compassion, and support, as with any other tragic loss. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of San Ramon, along with the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse and other community partners, do hereby recognize August 31st, 2024 as the International Overdose Awareness Day throughout the City of San Ramon. Dated August 13th, 2024, signed David E. Hudson, Mayor. Let's get a picture here. Get a picture. Okay. And if you'd like to make a statement.
Mayor Hudson, Vice Mayor Perkins, and councilmembers. My name is Dr. A.J. Shergill, and I'm a board member with the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse, the NCA PDA. On behalf of our organization and our president, April Rivera, who could not be here this evening, I would like to thank you for recognizing the International Overdose Awareness Day. This is a global event that is meant to remember those who have been tragically lost to overdose, to support those who have been left behind, and to break the stigma that keeps people with substance use issues from asking for help and seeking treatment. To put this overdose issue in perspective as a national public health crisis, last year, there were about 108,000 overdose deaths in the United States. That is an average of almost 300 Americans lost each day. In the San Ramon Valley, there were 74 recorded overdoses last year, two of which were fatal. The fatality count would likely have been much higher had naloxone not been administered to about half of those patients. You may not be aware, but the leading cause of death now in the 18- to 45-year-old age group is drug overdose in the United States. I think that is a very profound thing to be aware of. The majority of these overdoses result from illicit fentanyl that has been coming into the United States in the form of a counterfeit pill or powder. And this powder is now being laced virtually into every kind of street drug, such as heroin and methamphetamine and cocaine. So nothing is devoid of that now. Everyone, especially our children and youth, need to know and understand that no medication is safe unless it comes from a legitimate pharmacy and is taken as it is prescribed. And they need to understand that no street drug is ever safe, regardless of its source. Those we have lost to overdose mattered. We need to remember them and learn from them. Their families and friends who have been left behind to grieve also matter. We need to embrace them and support them. That is what International Overdose Awareness Day is all about, remembrance, support, and education to help prevent these avoidable deaths. The NCA PDA works in our local communities to save lives through our educational programs, overdose rescue training, and distribution of naloxone rescue kits. We encourage all of you to, to visit our website, which is thencapda.org, and register for one of our free virtual overdose rescue training sessions. You can also contact us at any time through our website to request a free naloxone rescue kit. We're also excited to announce the launch of a new program where we will be installing naloxone distribution units, where any community member can pick up a free naloxone kit. We invite those of you who are interested in hosting one of these units or who would like to volunteer with us to connect through our website. Once again, that is thencapda.org. Thank you very much for your proclamation recognizing August 31st as the International Overdose Awareness Day. It is very, it is a very important day that means a lot to those of us at the NCA PDA and to more community members than any of us can imagine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Shergill. But please tell April that we missed her this year.
Good evening, Mayor Hudson and San Ramon City Council members. My name is Driti Rao, and I'm a youth ambassador for the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse, also known as NCA PDA. I'm honored to accept the International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation alongside Dr. Shergill and Dr. Panos on behalf of NCA PDA. The highlight of this day is to pay tribute to the countless lives taken by substance use. As a community, spreading awareness is a pivotal step towards ending the overdose and substance use epidemic. The epidemic is not just a national crisis, but also a multifaceted societal issue. It is much more prevalent issue, one that reaches far beyond the news headlines. Peer pressure, media depiction, and mental stressors can all perpetuate the epidemic. Drugs do not discriminate. They have the potential to tragically cut short someone's life, halting their hopes and aspirations. The ripple effect is a lifetime of grieving and endless regret for families and loved ones. As a community, we must unite and exemplify this year's theme, Together We Can. Together, we can do more to support our youth, equip them with the resources they need, and provide a support system for families battling the harsh realities of substance use. To learn more about how you can get involved, connect with us at ncapda.org. And finally, I want to thank the City of San Ramon for recognizing the importance of today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think everything was well said. My name is Aglaiya Panos. I'm a pharmacist and the outreach director for the National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse. The issues have been presented, and the importance of this, of recognizing this day and paying tribute to those who have been lost is very important. And reaching out and as a community, doing more for our children, our kids, our families and support cannot be narrated enough. I do thank you for this, you know, proclamation, and we need to work together. We can make a difference, and we do. We've, we would have lost a lot more children, a lot of our children, if it hadn't been for NCA PDA, giving out training and helping. And you're all welcome to learn. It's easy. It's important. Talk to your children, talk to your families, your nieces, your uncles, you know, whoever's near. And as we said, it's not affecting just the young. It's between 18 and 45. In some communities, it's even the 50s and 60-year-olds who order things online thinking they're getting cheaper drugs, and in reality, they're getting something laced with fentanyl. So we need to educate everyone, and I thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 6.4, presentation of the Contra Costa Community College District, State of the District.
Well, good evening. It is such a pleasure to be before you this evening. My name is Mojda Merizadeh, and I serve as chancellor to the Contra Costa Community College District. And we have with us our wonderful and amazing college president. Yes, yes, right here.
Don't look farther.
Yes, Ms. Susan Lamb is here with us today, as well as our trustee, Andy Lee, who represents this very area, and I know you all know him quite well. In addition to that, we have our Director of Communications and Community Relations in the back here, Mr. Satinder Malhi, and our newest member right here in the San Ramon community, Amy Lehman Sexton, who is our new senior dean of the San Ramon campus. So we are here in full force to tell you a little bit about ourselves, although we know that you know us. So we'll get this going. So a little bit, today, we're going to share with you some information about us, really kind of giving you a backwards glance of where we started. We will also talk a little bit about our current and future stance, and then share just a tiny bit with you about what the California Community College landscape as a whole a whole looks like. So this beautiful depiction actually shows that we have been here for 75 years. So you can see that the district office, Diablo Valley College, and Contra Costa College are celebrating our 75th anniversaries right here in Contra Costa County. And what we identify as our baby college, Los Madanos College, is celebrating 50 years serving the East County community.
Makes us senior citizens.
We are, yes, we just learned, this makes us senior citizens. So it's kind of perfect. Our district was created back in December of 1948, and it was through a special election. We were the first countywide junior college district in the entire state. So another one of our amazing firsts. Things have changed a lot since we were formed. You can see that the county population at that time when we started instruction, just a few months later in 1949, was just under 250,000 residents. And we are now thriving in Contra Costa County with just over 1.16 million residents. And as you can imagine, our student population has also changed and evolved over the years. Today, we serve over 50,000 students. And here's where we are. So you can see that our very first college, Contra Costa College, opened in 1949, serving West County, not very much longer, not very much later than that, just a few months later. East Contra Costa Junior College, which was considered the West Junior College Campus, now known as Diablo Valley College, was born, and then ultimately adopted the name of Diablo Valley College in 1958. And then again, our baby college came onboard in 1974, serving East Contra Costa County. And the beautiful San Ramon Valley Campus opened in November of 2006 and adopted the name San Ramon Campus back in 2011. Our newest campus in Far East County, the Brentwood Center, opened in 2021. So you can see, we actually have quite a few locations, actually five locations, providing educational opportunities across this beautiful county. So this particular slide provides information about those who actually do the policy work across our county in higher education, and these are our wonderful elected governing board members. Certainly, you all know Andy Lee here quite well, representing San Ramon. But you can see, we have a total of five governing board members who serve four-year terms. We also have a student trustee. The student trustee serves a one-year term and rotates among our three colleges. This year, Ms. Helena Nezzi serves as our student trustee and is from Los Madanos College. So it's wonderful to see members of our Muslim community here. She represents our beautiful Muslim community, which is also thriving across our three colleges and centers. So I think it's really important that institutions represent the areas in which we serve. And as you can see here, Contra Costa Community College District as a whole, across our entire system, very much represents Contra Costa County. And as you can see, our Hispanic-Latino population, our Latinx or Latinee population comprises about 34% of all students within our colleges and centers. Our Asian population, our API population, is at 21%. And certainly, you can see our white, multirace, and other populations, including our Black or African-American population. I'm going to turn it over now to President Lamb, who's going to share with you a little bit more about Diablo Valley College and further information about the San Ramon Campus.
Thank you. I get very excited about DVC, so excuse me if I gush a little bit. I am a little bit biased, I will say. DVC's demographics does represent the community that we're in. If you look at the overall demographics between our two locations, we have the Pleasant Hill location, obviously, and the San Ramon location. We have about 27% that is Aladdin X and then also white. We have about 23% which is Asian-American, and with additional about 1% of Pacific Islander and Filipino, about 5% African-American and Black, and we're seeing an increasing number of biracial students. We have about 12% across both our campuses. If we look at just our San Ramon campus, these numbers change a little bit. Our Aladdin X population goes down, our Asian population increases substantially, along with our Pacific Islander and Filipino populations. We also see our multiracial populations coming up in this area. So slight difference, but in general, in the same ballpark. This is the first year that DVC has qualified to become an Annapese Institution, which is an Asian-American, Native American, and Pacific Islander-serving institution, and is also our first year to become an HSI, or Hispanic-serving institution, for the first time in the history of the college. So you probably know what we offer in some ways. We offer a variety of associate degrees, certificates, and most of these are connected to transfer pathways that offer guaranteed admission to UC and to CSU. We also offer our classes both at San Ramon and at Pleasant Hill in a variety of formats. Obviously, since COVID, we have more students wanting online, our asynchronous courses also synchronous online. But we find that students, some students are very successful this way, especially our students that are more disciplined, but a large number of our students are looking for the flexibility, but also the in-person. So we're getting more and more hybrid courses that do the best of the flexibility plus the person-to-person. We also do in-person classes, both during the day, in the evenings, and weekends. We find that some students need this structure, and it's interesting, when I walk around our campuses, sometimes I talk to students and I say, hey, you know, what classes are you taking? And they say, oh, I'm 100% online, but you're here. Well, I want to be here. I want to be around other students. I want to engage with other people. So even though students, they're taking 100% online, are still showing up at the college to make sure that they get that college experience. As you probably know or may not know, we have free tuition programs. This is free student tuition regardless of income. We are also finding that students have a barrier. One of the major barriers is textbooks. So more and more of our instructors are starting to go to low-cost textbooks or no-cost textbooks to help students in that way. We also have wellness center. As you know, post-COVID, more of our students are suffering from anxiety or depression issues, and so we want to make sure that we are there to help support our students. They can also get healthcare online. We also find that our students are struggling with sometimes just food or need technology for hotspots or for computers, and so those are also available. But I think the most important thing is the student support. We offer free tutoring. We also have supportive communities at the college, but there's also that thing I talked about before, student life. We have over 60-plus clubs. We have drama. We have choirs. We have music. We have, you name it. And so a lot of our students come to the colleges and locations to engage in those.
Can I just say, they have a cheese club?
We do have a cheese club. It's one of the more popular clubs I've got.
High Plankton University of Wisconsin-Wood.
Do they do the Monty Python Cheese Store routine?
They do every cheese routine, I think. They are...
If you haven't seen it, you ought to see the Cheese Store routine from Monty Python.
I will have to check that out. They are official cheese heads, I will say, and they are quite proud of it. I will also mention one other thing. Some students, you know, for people that have been to larger universities, you go to a university and your classroom size is 300 to 500 people, you are taught by a TA that is there to get through graduate school, and that's nothing against our university partners, okay? But that doesn't work for a lot of students. They find that when they're taking that organic chemistry class or that physics class, they want to know their teacher. They want a teacher who cares whether they're successful. Our classes tend to be 35 to 50 students. In our lab classes, they're about 20, 25 students. They get to know the students, they help them succeed, and they help with that foundation to help get them to that next level. And so I just really want to stress, it's not just the, it's not just the other supports, it's that support in the classroom that's so valuable. It builds that foundation. So as you know, we are considered a transfer institution, but we're also an educational hub. We have more and more high school students that are now starting to take classes while they're in high school. In fact, some students that attend the college at the same time they're graduating from high school, they are going to a four-year as a junior because they have also finished their AA at the same time. We also have partnerships with our adult schools, especially in terms of ESL courses and early childhood education. And then we also have adult learners. They're coming back to learn skills. Sometimes they're wanting to take accounting course or other things just to help themselves. We have transfer agreements, as I talked about, with all our major universities, and DVC is the number-one California Community College for successful completion of the Associate Degree for Transfer. We actually had an audit come in from the state legislature looking at us. We, you know, no one likes audits, but they were looking at us to see what we were doing right so that they could basically encourage other colleges to do similar-type actions. We also do career advancement. You know, sometimes we have individuals wanting to change jobs. They come in, they get cyber security certification, they get their real estate license, they say, ooh, I need to take accounting course to improve. And of course, we do work with our workforce boards and community partners to help also connect individuals with jobs at the other end. I talked about partnerships with our high schools. Obviously, the four San Ramon high schools are strong partners. We have built two very strong programs with them. One of them is College Connect. This was the one I talked about earlier, where students dream the high school day, can take college courses at the same time and actually finish their AA degree at the same time that they're finishing their high school requirements. We have about 120 students in that one, which is a smaller group. We're also recognizing that some students don't want to go to college. They have heard the national story, and they say, ooh, I'm not ready to go to college. We have actually started a pre-apprenticeship program with these students, offering these students construction pre-apprenticeships, so they can learn about the trades and get ready. There is a lot of math in apprenticeships, believe it or not. Get ready, those math skills, before they go into an apprenticeship when they leave high school. And I don't know about you, but I had to have a plumber come out to my house the other day, and they wanted $400 just to get their foot in the door. These pre-apprenticeship programs, where they go into steam fitters and carpentry and other areas, they offer a good wage without having to spend two to four years in college. We also have a number of high school, almost about 1,000 high school students. They're taking classes just independently after their high schools. And then, of course, as you see on the map, we also partner with Mount Diablo Unified School District, Martinez and Al Kalani's School District, in addition to our private and independent schools that are out there. And then, as I mentioned before, our transfer institutions. DVC is the number-one transfer in the state to, yes, there's a bias in us there, to UC Berkeley and then also to UC Davis. We are the number-two college overall for UC transfers at large, and also for UC Santa Cruz, CSU East Bay, and UC Santa Cruz. And then we're the number-three transfer for UC San Diego, UC Merced, San Francisco State University HD, and Cal Marantine Academy. So regardless whether we have our high school students or those students that are coming just to get some job skills to improve their jobs, we're trying to meet the students where they are and give them those skills to be successful. And I will shift back to Mojda.
Thank you so much. And what we can say is, let's switch. Let's switch. And what we can say is, we do this all at the lowest possible cost to our taxpayers in the state of California. So what we are providing to you here today is information about the funding of per full-time equivalent student. And you can see, you know, between our K-12, our wonderful and amazing K-12 partners, as well as the Cal State and UC, we are beyond a bargain, is probably the best way to describe it. And again, we shared with you, it's on a full-time equivalent student basis. Many of our students actually enroll with us on a part-time basis, less so, I would say, kind of in the San Ramon area, but other parts of our county where we have frankly individuals that are working full-time jobs, have families, and are trying to kind of better their futures, oftentimes are enrolling in two to three classes. And so typically, about every 2.2 students is equivalent to one full-time equivalent. So when we think about it from a headcount perspective, we're beyond a bargain, is probably the best way to describe it. And I must tell you, I personally am a proud Community College graduate. Yes, I did go to Diablo Valley College. And so it is an amazing place to get your start and continue on through your four-year and beyond endeavor. So a little bit more about us. So you heard about how much we receive in terms of funding per full-time student equivalent. That funding is specifically directed towards our instructional support, faculty members' instructional support services, and student support services. We do not have regular funding provided to us in order to maintain our beautiful facilities and provide the level of technological advancement that our educational systems require. But thanks to you, our amazing voters in Contra Costa County, over the course of our 75-year history, you have passed three bonds that have helped us to ensure that we provide the facilities that are necessary to educate, including the wonderful and beautiful San Ramon Campus right here. Our two most recent bonds have been within the last 10 years, as you can see here, in 2014, and most recently, measures that were sold to taxpayers, our most recent Measure E funds, the last 110 million of that was sold in 2022. You can also see that we have amazing, strong bond ratings. Both S&amp;P and Moody's have provided incredible positive outlook associated with the ways in which we utilize your tax dollars. And we are incredibly thoughtful about ensuring that we refund funds when there are rate changes. So you can see that we have actually already refinanced and refunded $402 million back to our wonderful and amazing taxpayers. We say this because it's really deeply important for us to ensure that we maintain a strong fiscal standing across our community colleges. You can see that our annual budget, including bond measures, is at approximately $463 million this past year. We are required, and actually our board passed a resolution requiring that we retain at least two months of operating expenses, and you can see that was about $70 million, or 26% of our expenditure budget this past year. And every year, we maintain clean audits for district operations as well as our bond measures. We are fiscally prudent. We care about the dollars that you support us with, and we have delivered over and over again. And we are part of a broader system. So there are 116 community colleges across the state of California, serving approximately 250. 2.1 million students. This is important because we are the largest system of public higher education, not just in this nation, but across the world. And very often, we have folks that come and look at us to learn from us and to really kind of carry out our work in other areas. You'll see that 51% of all Cal State University and 21% of all UC graduates started at a community college. As I mentioned, that was me. More than 70% of community college students are of ethnically diverse backgrounds. So you heard about us here within our county, but you can see that that is a trend across the entire state. And finally, finally, we, this information was actually produced in 2018. We are in the process of having an updated economic impact analysis conducted, but you can see that our total annual impact is about $1.8 billion of added income provided right back to this county. That's equivalent to about 22,510 jobs that are supported. And your investment is worth every penny because for every dollar invested, our students earn back about $6.30. Our taxpayers receive about $3.20 in that return on investment, and the society as a whole, $18.20. So when I share with you that we are in the process of updating our economic impact study and analysis, it is because we are getting ready to embark on our new strategic plan. We currently have a district-wide strategic plan for dated 2020 through 2025. And this year, the 24-25 academic year, we are embarking on getting feedback from our wonderful and amazing community to help us envision what you would like for the future of education to look like here in San Ramon and across the county. So we are going to be inviting all of you to come and share your thoughts and feedback with us. Community involvement matters. We know that many of you have attended our colleges, you have children that have attended our colleges and other members of your family. We know we have stories, we've heard, we've heard them here before. So we thank you for your time and are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, I would recommend that you stay for the presentation by Lauren, Lauren Barr about the projects we have come up in San Ramon. And I'd like to say to you personally that I attend the graduation of, at ABC for the construction, plumbers and such.
Thank you.
And I gave the same speech, almost word for word. If I had it to do over again, I would just get an RV and just move up to where the construction is for all the cities burning down. You'll be busy for the rest of your life.
It's true.
Make more money and over time, in a couple of years, you can retire. Don't even have to wait till you're a senior. Any questions for them before we cut them loose?
I'm just going to briefly, my third son, DVC, then went to Sac State, finished his degree. Then he was, while he was working, he got a degree online through Oregon State in computer science. Got a job at Google, is now making far more money than I ever made and is wrapping up his master's degree online through Georgia Tech. But he got his start at DVC. And I, I try and emphasize, I'm an active Boy Scout leader, and I try and emphasize to my Boy Scouts that it doesn't really matter where you start, it's where you end. And going to community college can help you in so many ways. And yeah, it's fabulous, you get that ticket to Berkeley or Stanford, but if you don't, don't be, don't be sad. It's where you, it's how hard you put and how much work you put in.
Save $100,000 for your first two years too, you know?
No, his life has been just fabulous.
Just two months.
Once he got that good start at DVC and taking classes of 30 and 40 instead of 300 and 400, where he would have been lost.
I think that's it. Gives that good foundation to start to wherever you want to go.
You guys are doing a fantastic job. We're grateful to have you here in our community.
Yes. And DVC is obviously the busiest route. We've got it, County Connection, so somebody's got, got to be going there.
Yes.
Thank you, Chancellor, Chancellor and President. Chancellor Mosde Mehdi Zadeh.
Perfect.
And President Suzanne Lamb. Thank you. Thanks for excellent presentation.
You must have gone to a community college.
So thank you for excellent presentation. My son, as similar to Vice Mayor Perkins, my son is also a big beneficiary of our Diablo Valley College in San Ramon. He got his credits from Diablo Valley and he is able to complete his computer science engineering from our UC system in two and a half years.
Yes.
Instead of four, four years. So save good money. And I have a couple of questions. So my question regarding the lab, especially the physics and chemistry biology, so I do get a lot of other parents, and also my younger one is getting ready to his high school. So do we have any plans when we want to get the lab in our Diablo Valley College?
Just finished our facilities master plan. And guess what's in our next facilities master plan?
Yes, additional building that is Science Labs, basically, is what we're looking at.
Wonderful.
Awesome, wonderful. Any ETA, like, any estimated time that we'll be ready for the which academic year so that we can have some idea on that?
We hope in the fairly near future, to be very frank with you, funding is going to be a bit of an issue. Frankly, we have now spent all of the funds for the last bond. As we've articulated, the last $110 million have been utilized to provide the beautiful and amazing spaces that we're in. And we are looking actively at other possibilities for funding sources in the near future.
You have a superstar Andy Lee, board member.
Of course we do. Yes.
We'll give you a couple of weeks, Andy.
He can make it happen.
My second question is regarding transfers. There is some questions that I do get from community that is, is there any limitation on the transfers that they can do in UC system? Is there, like, for example, computer science engineering, someone do their courses? Can they transfer to UC system in computer science engineering?
Yes, yes. In fact, we have what we are called a, a transfer agree, a tag agreement, right? And if they do the courses and they make a decent GPA, they are guaranteed a transfer. Now, the UCLA and Berkeley have kind of side agreements, okay? But the others are pretty straightforward. But even UC Berkeley and UCLA, they are, they are part of those tag agreements.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Oh, I'd love to, but do you want to go next or?
Well, thank you, thank you for the presentation. That was fantastic. And congratulations on the fantastic transfer program that you've got. The one question I had, had to do with, with veterans. I went to a Veterans Resource Fair last year, very successful, rainy day, but it was a very successful event. But what, can you tell us a little bit about either educational opportunities or vocational training opportunities for our veterans?
Yes, we have, you know, we have our Veterans Resource Center and we are actually building it up. It looks like we may receive another grant to be able to put in more supports for our veterans. But we also, you know, there's certain organizations like Wells Fargo that is always looking for veterans. And so we have another, several organizations, we're trying to actively build those that, because they're looking for, for vets on this side and we have a supply. And so that's part of our plan for the next year or two is to really intentionally go after those connections. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And we do have counselors. We have a counselor that's specifically dedicated to veterans too.
Yes.
That's great.
That's at the San Ramon campus or throughout the district?
Throughout, in both districts. The, the Veterans Center functions on both campuses. They have more of a physical location at Pleasant Hill, but they also do, do presentations and other things down here. So if you have a vet, we will travel where they are and connect with them.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So I just can't thank you both enough for everything you have done for so many students and for my daughter. As you know, my daughter was a student at DVC. And this was a child who probably, like many students who go to DVC, you know, because she had disabilities, as you know, stemming from her ordeal with cancer, was told by the school district when she was graduating high school that she probably couldn't succeed in college and should, you know, make, take another route. But it's really about, you know, these community colleges are really a bridge, an opportunity for these young people who are struggling for whatever reasons maybe in their life, happening in their life, to have an opportunity to have a real second chance or reset button, regardless of what obstacles they've been facing up until that point. And, you know, really just the opportunity, seeing firsthand and up close what you were able to do and the opportunity you created for my daughter, somebody who, you know, for all intents and purposes was told because of, you know, certain metrics and tests that were done that she couldn't succeed now, you know, she got not only to UC Davis, as you know, she got into UC San Diego, UC Santa Barbara, and she's actually now double majoring in, you know, psychology and Spanish. So, you know, so. But, but that is the importance of this. Like, when you talk about the economic return on investment, this is really a lifelong investment and such a wonderful, positive social benefit. And, you know, I just want to say thank you, keep up the great work. I even tutored some of your students at DVC.
Yay, yay.
It was a lot of fun. Well, I had to do something while I was driving my daughter to school, so I figured why not help other students in the process. But I also took the opportunity to take some classes, personal enrichment classes myself, and learned three other languages and reinforced a fourth. So now I'm, I know officially five languages, thanks to you. Many wonderful things that you do for people, but those are really important things that you're doing. And thank you so much. And let us know how we can continue to support you as well. Thank you.
We're grateful to you.
I just briefly want to mention again that Lauren Barr is going to give a presentation on projects, both residential projects and commercial projects around the city. You might want to stay and listen to this to find out what's being, going to be built. There you go, Lauren. You don't get that kind of intro very often, do you?
No pressure, Lauren.
No. It's really a fabulous presentation. You learn a lot and you won't have to write in the next door and say, what are they building over there? Because if you just ask the city, next door is not going to answer you, but Lauren will.
Okay, next item, please.
Item seven, deferred consent items, we have none. Item eight, unfinished business, we also have none this evening. Item nine, new business, 9.1 planning project year in review, 2023, 2024, presentation by Lauren Barr, Division Manager.
All right. No pressure, Lauren. No pressure at all. Just let me get the slideshow up. And I feel compelled to say, UC Berkeley grad via Laney College, Junior College.
Who would have thought it, right?
Who would have thought, yeah. Out of planning, you're going to be kidding. I think it's UC Central.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor, Council members. So I have the presentation of the Planning Commission Year in Review for '23, '24 fiscal year that ended this June. As you're aware, major activities that occurred within planning was the General Plan 2040 update. And this included the certification of the housing element back in 2023, as well as the adoption of the General Plan 2040 in December of '23. We currently are working on the Climate Action Plan. That was deferred due to some timing issues, but we're, we're going to be moving ahead with that and I'll touch on it again in a little bit. We also did some updates to our inclusionary housing ordinance to tighten up some of the standards. We removed the ability to fee out for for sale projects of 10 or more units. We also increased the requirements for those same projects from 10% to 15%. And then we increased the affordability term from 30 years to 55 years, as well as some other technical amendments on how you round up and down on, on unit counts. So in response to the General Plan update, we also have some requirements to update our zoning ordinance. And so we started that process. There's a lot of consistency things that we need to work on, such as parking standards. State law keeps evolving the standards over time, and so we're, we're playing catch-up with trying to get our local standards in line with some of the, the standards that are, are being enforced statewide. But in addition to updating parking standards, we've been doing some analysis on non-retail policies as well as objective design standards, which again, I'll talk about in a little more detail. In addition, we formed a Climate Action Plan Task Force based on council direction, and we're working through some of the guidance and implementation measures with that group now. And we anticipate bringing that through the process later this fall toward the end of the year, as we take the input we get from that committee and, and put it into practice. We also had a workshop with the Planning Commission back in April on the non-retail analysis. And it was a very interesting study that we did. It could have been a thesis for a college project. And looking at the, the, the impact of non-retail standards on, on sales tax revenue and some of the way our standards are applied. And so we're going to revisit that with the full city council later this fall. But it also influences how we move forward with some of our, our land use tables and what's allowed and which type of zones in terms of retail and non-retail uses. And again, it's something that was an eye-opening exercise and it will be interesting for everyone involved. Objective design standards, as you're aware, state law, housing law in particular, limits our ability to regulate certain design standards. And so the, the standards that we have to, have to be objective and quantifiable. And so we're revisiting the way we look at standards, rather than going through just like an architectural review process, which is basically an opinion of design professionals as to what is good design. We create these standards that are essentially performance standards that say, you know, you shall have this type of pitch on your roof, or you shall have this type of window openings. And then it leaves it up to the designers to create projects that meet those requirements. But there's no subjective verification. It's just, it is what it is. And then we move forward with the review of those projects that are, are limited by objective design standards. And so we, we met with the Architectural Review Board on our draft documents last week. We're going to Planning Commission for a workshop next week, and so we're going to continue to revise those standards and move forward this, this fall. In addition, we had the General Plan Annual Report, as we do every year, and that's the status of implementation of our current general plan, housing element, and then we also do a biannual, or biannual report on the Climate Action Plan. You might recall, we had several workshops with the Orchards or formerly Chevron Park. This was also partially related to the General Plan update and looking at what might be possible in terms of a redevelopment of the Chevron Park property. These are some concepts that Bishop Ranch, the owner of the property, had put forward in terms of some high-density mixed use adjacent to Bolinger, as well as a transition down to residential properties as you get toward Inverness Park. And so formal development applications for this concept have not been filed with the city yet. At some point in the not-too-distant future, we'll work through a process to evaluate the potential concepts and, and refine the vision. You might also recall that we had the Iron Horse Village Development. This is a 9.5 acre project site on the corner of Alcosta and Crocanian Road. They demolished the existing office building, or they're going to demolish the existing office building for 117 units. It's a mix of detached and attached units, also with some live-work units. This was reviewed by the city council on a call for review back in December of 2023. It has been approved. They're working on their development applications as well as demolition permits for the existing You might also recall, for several years back, we had the Chang Residential Development Project. There was an extension filed by, by the Chang Developer Group to extend the, the term of the the term of the, the map, the vesting map. There's also been a series of extensions with Lafco, because this required the annexation into the city. And at this point in time, the annexation with Lafco has expired. The final extension from the city approvals will go through May of next year. But without the annexation, there's really not much chance of this particular project moving forward. The commission also reviewed a concept review related to Chang. It looked at a couple of different options in terms of adding additional residential units to that property, originally 43 single-family, and then additional concept with 70 multifamily units. And then a second option that had 102 single-family units and 70 multifamily. Neither of one, neither of these were particularly well-received, given the site constraints on the, on the property, and it would require a total reprocessing of, of what the prior approvals were. And so they've received feedback and have not come back since then. We also had some development move forward in the CityWalk Master Plan, the Bishop Ranch 3A Neighborhood, which is 457 units. It's a two-building concept with also about 11,000 square feet of leasing amenities. There's a central parking structure, and then the units wrap around the edge, so you, you don't actually see the parking structure as part of this. That was approved back in June. We're waiting on building permits to be filed, so we would anticipate within the next six months or so, we would see something come in for that. A lot of these larger projects are also dependent on funding and, and market conditions, so we have to be sensitive to the timing of, of some of those items. So in terms of some of the past approvals that are under construction now, we have the City Village, or BR6. I'm sure you've all been watching the progress along Camino Ramon, and it's moving very quickly. I have to say, the 134 building permits issued is probably outdated already. They're, they're moving along very quickly. But that goes back to a 2021 approval. But they're, they're moving right along and also working on the park design as well. We also have, in the CityWalk Master Plan 1A Community, the Belmont Village Senior Care Facility, 183 beds with onsite amenities. It's gone vertical, and the finish works underway now. They anticipate occupancy in early 2025. So I'm sure there'll be a grand opening ceremony and lots of opportunities to view, view the amenities that they're putting in there. But it, it's been a very quick-moving project, but being done very thoughtfully as well. We have some revisions to the fire district that were processed through the Planning Commission. The training center updates were previously approved. There was just some revisions to the classroom sizes and the, the training tower footprint, and these are under construction right now. And so I'm not sure exactly the timeline, but I would imagine in the next six to eight months, we'll see them start to wrap that up. So now we have our past approvals that are in building permit plan check. And again, this, some of these go back a few years. Although this one was recently approved, you might recall, a general plan amendment and rezone for the 2481 Deerwood Townhomes. This is an existing office building surrounding by, surrounded by residential. It was approved for a 61-unit townhome development, and that was approved back in April of 2023. And they are in building plan check right now. And I'm sure you've heard that they're, they're working on demolition of the existing building now. They've gone through some challenges with nesting birds and some delays with PG&E, as well as, as I mentioned, the nesting birds, they had to wait for some nests, nests to vacate before they could start work. But we anticipate the building permits will be issued later this summer. Then also, within the CityWalk Bishop Ranch 1A Neighborhood, we have the Related Project, which is an apartment building. This is a view from the overcrossing in the lower left side. It's a 383-unit multifamily apartment project, again, with a central parking structure that's hidden from view. This is immediately to the north of the Belmont Village project, and it runs from the Bishop Ranch Extension Road down to the Camino Ramon intersection. And so it'll be a fairly dramatic change to that corner. But it will also have an affordable housing component of 15%. And again, we're waiting, they're in plan check, but we're waiting on, on permits to be issued. It's also subject to some of the financing challenges that are in place right now. Also, one of our early SB 330 projects, TTLC Townhomes. This is 500 Deerwood. It's a vacant parcel above a somewhat dilapidated retaining wall. They have their, just recently had their final map approved. They are in plan check. We're hoping to get them, permits issued again later this year. It's, again, subject to their agency permits, as well as, as getting, you know, the financing in place to start construction.
How many units?
58. And also a 15% affordability requirement. Then we had the El Nido Assisted Living Concept with the El Nido Home Preservation. This is a 72-bed residential care facility. It was approved back in November. They are in building plan check. There are some outstanding comments, and they're working through some issues. And so I'm not quite sure of the status of it, but they are at least in process. Then there's San Ramon Valley Apartments, sometimes referred to as the Rome Property. They are in plan check as well. They've been in plan check for a while. And we're still hopeful that they will get their funding in order and be able to proceed. But they're, at some point, their, their plan checks will expire, and then we'll have to either reprocess or look at an alternative design for the, the site. But we're still hopeful that they'll, they'll complete their plan check at some point in the near future. Okay, so past approvals with construction that's to be determined. This one's not so, so far in the past, but we, we wanted to put it in here just to talk about it briefly. This is the Morgans Masonry Site. This was the, the city's first by right approval based on state law. It's 131 units. One of the units is for managers, but everything else is extremely low, low and very low income. It qualifies for our Development Impact Fee Waiver Program that was adopted by council. And then they are currently working on their financing. And so the building permits will, won't come in until they, they have their financing in place. So we're, we're not quite sure what the timing of that's going to be, because it's subject to the, the, the timing of state.
Does the design allow for the inclusion of that automobile repair place?
It, it works around it currently.
Well, should that automobile repair place decide, okay, we'll sell, that it could be integrated without looking completely out of whack?
It, it could be, yes. I don't know that they actually did a phase design for it, but it's, they were in conversations with them at some point. I just don't know the status of that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Then just a little bit more about the use-by-right process. We have a housing element program, recently adopted, Program 15, that, that sets forth the requirements as outlined in AP 1397, which is the by right provisions. And it basically sets a standard of 20% of units for lower-income households. We must allow it by right. And that's based on government code standards. And what they mean by by right is it need, it should not require discretionary review or an approval that would constitute a project under CEQA. Very technical way of looking at it, but it's, it's clearly defined in the, in the government code. Now, they are also, because of the percentages, they are subject to density bonus concessions and waivers, or they benefit from that. So they can waive development standards as necessary to make their projects viable. It's also consistent with our Inclusionary Ordinance, because they're exceeding the 15% by building, you know, a higher percentage. We are allowed to do architectural review for compliance with, with our standards, and we can put in standard conditions of approval, as long as we can make the case that they are reasonable and necessary for compliance with city standards. As I mentioned, they're also subject to the fee waiver policy that we have in place to help encourage it. It will show up as a, a city match in terms of, of their financing. We also have some strict timelines for processing. 90 days for projects under 150 units, 180 days for those over 150 units. We do publish these projects on our Pending Housing page, so people that are interested can go to that particular site. I would also say that by right is also not excluded from SB 330 vesting either. They can go that route as well, to lock in their standards. And we have to follow the provisions of state law there. And then lastly, we do provide updates through the council weeklies, and then city manager can provide comments on the status, as, as we make them aware of things related to the status of these projects. But so once we hear that funding's in place, we'll be updating the council on that. And then we have the Marketplace Mixed Use Development, demolishing a 55,000-square-foot commercial facility or commercial space, 40 single-family detached condo units with some junior ADUs, and then a renovation of the Starbucks. It was approved by council back in March of 2023. There was litigation over this. The city and the property owner initially prevailed, and now there's an appeal pending. So we'll, we'll find out if that goes forward or not. But at least we, we got through the first phase of the court challenge. With regard to Golden Skate or Windflower Townhomes at Hooper Road, also an SB 330 project and a vesting map, they have been delayed due to some landslide issues to the west. And so they're trying to work through some of the, the grading concerns. And I know that they've been marketing it to a couple of different developers, but I'm not sure that there's been much movement pending the, the, the grading issues. And then lastly, we have the City Center Hotel. As you're aware, this project was approved at a time prior to COVID and prior to a lot of the challenges related to tourism and, and travel. This is a, project is vested with development agreements for the City Center project and CityWalk. And so right at this point, we're just waiting on the economic conditions to support them moving forward with it. There has been no desire to reprocess or change this as of yet. So we anticipate it's still a valid project when the time is right. And so that ends my presentation for tonight. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions, staff?
I just have one. You want to go first?
I just have one. I just, first of all, thank you for the presentation. That was a lot, a lot of work and over a lot of time. Just the only question on the DBL, when you say waive development standards, can you define what some of those concessions might include?
Yeah, it, it can be a height standard. It can be a sidewalk width standard. It could be landscape standards. It has to be necessary to make the project feasible. And so, you know, but the burden is on us to prove that it, it's, it would not make the project infeasible. And so it's a hard standard to, to match. But, but there's any number of things that can be waived in order just to make the project feasible. You know, the other thing with the SB 330 applications, there's the opportunity to process under general plan standards or zoning standards. And typically, general plan standards do not have very detailed technical standards. So you might be limited really just to density and, and land use kind of things. And so it's, it's a balancing act of trying to make sure we try and accomplish the goals of our, our zoning and our general plan. But we have to walk that line based on the, the standards that have been put in place by state law.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is the bill 330s like when council members go to Sacramento and forget where they came from?
Yeah. Lauren, you know, we've talked, you've talked a little bit about SB 330 now, you know, through some of the projects and some of the comments here. But can you just summarize for the benefit of others in the audience, what is SB 330? And in terms of the impact on the number of meetings, the amount of public participation, and those sorts of things that...
So SB 330 is really a process that locks in development standards and, and, and requires that we accelerate the review process. And so when someone files an SB 330 preliminary housing permit, it locks in the fees and development standards as of the date that that's accepted. And then they have 180 days to file their formal applications that are consistent with that preliminary application. And then as a result of that, we are limited to five hearings. Well, we say hearings, but it's technically meetings. So Architectural Review Board counts as one. Any policy meetings would count as one. So we have to be very prudent about how we spend our, our, our meetings. And so with the Planning Commission, we also have to save one in the case there's an appeal to council. So, you know, we, we have a process that we've adopted where, within the first 30 days before it's deemed complete, we come with a study session with the Planning Commission to get some early feedback and make the public aware of what's going on. But, but yeah, once we get into the process of actually formal public hearings, we are somewhat limited in our ability to draw out a project over time.
Okay. All right. And, you know, I'll just say, you mentioned the marketplace. I, I'm surprised, still even today, today I got a question. Really, there's a lot of disinformation out there, but people seem to think the entire marketplace is going away, when it's just that one corner there where Nob Hill Grocery was and the, the haircut place and, you know, a couple of other little smaller shops. But Starbucks is remaining, CVS is remaining, you know, where Hop Yard was, and Cold Stone and Trader Joe's, all that, all that other area is remaining there. But a lot of people think that whole area is, is going away for housing. And...
It was only a portion, and they've actually been currently doing some upgrades to the center, some painting and, and, you know...
Well, they're redoing the roof on the part they're going to take down.
Yeah. I mean, it's probably part of the requirements. But in any case, yeah, it's, it's only a piece of the, what's considered the marketplace shopping center as a whole. And so it's to the, the southern portion.
Yeah. And then just the last thing, I'd just say, I appreciate you, you know, putting a spotlight on the by right approval process for Morgans Masonry, because had, had we not talked about kind of in this forum, a lot of people wouldn't really know that that process is out there and, and that location is, is subject to the by right process at Morgans Masonry. You know, this is all kind of state law kinds of things, and that project meets those particular standards. And, and maybe that will help contribute to meeting some of our mandated affordability requirements for the number of mandated units we have to, to build. But it's, it's just not our usual process of going through an application, a planning commission, a series of meetings and reviews and, and that sort of thing. It's, it's basically, they submit it, and it's a done deal almost, subject to, you know, staff and, and, and a few, a few meetings and review processes.
Yeah. I mean, it's basically the equivalent of approving a building permit. Now, we have a little bit more, our process has created at least the, the ability to put conditions into the, the review process. But again, those conditions have to be standard conditions that are just basically to convey what the requirements are for the developer, so that they know what to expect when they actually come in for, for permits.
Yeah. Again, I appreciate it, because, you know, otherwise, the, the next time somebody, somebody will see a fence going up around that property, that'll be the first time they hear anything going on there. But, but now, this will help inform the public of what that project is and, and what that process is. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Councilmember Armstrong, for asking for explanation on SB 330. Thanks, Lauren, for explaining. So on adding on top of it, what happens, what is the outcome if we don't abide to the rules of SB 330? I just want to make sure the public are aware of it.
Well, there, there's fines and penalties that can be charged, substantial fines and penalties. The courts will end up approving it anyway. And so, you know, unless we can make a compelling argument that is contrary to public health and safety, which is... public health and safety, which is a high bar to make, uh, when you're dealing with a, a project that will comply with building codes. And so, um, yeah, it, it's, it's basically getting tied up in litigation. Um, you know, you then might run into some situations about, uh, compliance with your housing element and consistency, uh, and that could put into jeopardy some of our funding sources as well, in addition to the, you know, daily penalties that we might get.
Sounds good. Thanks for sharing that. Uh, my, another point is regarding the overall plan that you shared, right? It, it's all, um, amazing, but then this is on the timeline horizon. If you see, like especially our City Walk projects and all those, those are all like twenty-five years, right? So those, those are not coming up, all these units are not coming up within certain time. Can we add the timeframe also into these projects?
So, um, well, we can't compel a timeframe, but I'll, I'll give you a, uh, an idea of the timeframe. So, uh, for example, the City Walk master plan had, uh, forty-five-hundred units over twenty-five to thirty years. And so we've actually divided up those units over three housing cycles. So we took roughly a third of them, uh, or in this current cycle, the current eight-year cycle, and then the next group will be, uh, the next. And so we'll just, uh, basically track it as it comes in. But for example, you know, we're, we're already, uh, you know, roughly a thousand units into the forty-five-hundred between Avalon Bay, um, and the, um, um...
Belmont.
Related, thank you. One A, yes. And then, and Belmont as well. And so, um, you know, that process will, will go forward, and it's a very different financing structure between these multifamily, large-scale apartments than it is with the townhomes like Summer Hills doing. Uh, you can see how quickly those things get built, whereas a structure like this, this, or like, uh, related, you know, you're looking at eighteen months to two years before you can get out of construction mode and then start leasing spaces. So cash flow is a, a big issue with these large projects. And so, um, you know, the townhome things have been coming in, um, and then, you know, we also have outside of the City Walk plan, you know, the Chevron property, uh, but that was also not part of our, our housing element numbers. So there'll be some kind of cushion there with the units that we have produced as part of that.
Sounds good. That's pretty much, the spread is quite a long time. It's not like all this housing is coming overnight and then, um, so just want to make sure whoever is listening or public to let them know this is the plan and...
Yeah. I mean, the, the applications will come in, but it could be many years before they're actually constructed. Uh, and so, and even some of these con, I mean, look at City Center as an example. I mean, off and on, we were twenty years in the making for that, and, uh, it'll, it changed three times. So, um, you know, these things may, the City Walk may change a bit as, as the times change and they get more, uh, refined in terms of what the market will support and what the community needs, so...
Yeah. And one more thing I, I would like to mention that, um, to the public, that they should be reading about RENA, Regional Housing Need Allocation. It's very important. If you have any questions, please feel free to check with Lauren on that one.
Contact planning.
Or you can call any of our council member or mayor.
Call, call the mayor.
Call mayor, yeah.
Mayor's no longer on A-Bag, he has nothing to do with it.
I would just say, we have a lot of good information on our webpages, uh, a lot of information about the current status of projects, and then, um, you know, as we've revised the, the general plan over time, we're updating the websites to reflect those changes. And, uh, you know, you can see the approved documents have redlined changes, and we're always happy to talk to the public if they have questions specifically, they can contact planning.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. I'll just, uh, mention one more thing. You, you know, you talked about Belmont Village, and, uh, recently at the senior advisory committee meeting, uh, Jen Coons Camp, she's executive director for Belmont Village, she gave a, a great presentation on that facility and showed kind of some renderings of what that's going to look like, and it looks like it's going to be a really nice, uh, senior living place, uh, that'll have, you know, independent living, assisted living, uh, memory care and that sort of thing. One of the things, um, though it wasn't in your presentation, just to highlight, we also, you know, had the, the ribbon cutting for Aspen Wood, uh, the senior living, a hundred percent affordable senior living, a hundred and twenty-three units, uh, just a beautiful place, uh, a very unique, you know, public-private partnership and some unique funding to get that across the finish line, but that's another, uh, great project. They're already filled up and, uh, doing really well to meet a, um, a great need in our community for senior housing.
So I guess I might need another category of completed projects, so, but, uh, but yes, that, that project, uh, had been on our prior updates and it's now complete, so...
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Lot of happy people. Thanks, Lauren.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions, then we'll move on. Next item, please.
Item ten, city manager and city council members' comments and matters initiated.
All right. Uh, thank you, mayor and members of the council. Just one very quick update tonight. Um, with the, uh, the closing of, of summer season, summer break, uh, we have had a successful summer season. Thank you to everybody involved, in particular Kathy and her crew with Parks and Community Services. Um, I would like to mention, though, if you are looking for something for your middle school teen to do, our middle school teen centers are now open. Uh, applications are open for both centers at Iron Horse and Pine Valley Middle Schools. And for more information, you can register, and registration, uh, it's available at srteen.org. And with that, I have no other updates for this evening.
Sure, I will start with you this time. Marisol gets it all the time.
I went on vacation, so that's, that's good. So, um, other than that, uh, we had a great national night out, thanks to San Ramon Police Department Chief. Uh, I had honor to drive around the community with chief. Uh, it was well attended, and, uh, thanks to all community organizers, volunteers for organizing and, uh, sharing your feedback as well as sharing food, delicious food. Uh, we appreciate that. And we got a lot of good feedback about how city is running, so, um, congratulations to manage, city manager, Spodrowski, for doing good job. And then, um, we did a couple of interviews, one is on commission interviews, and, uh, also we did, uh, vice teen chair interviews. So that's, uh, pretty much from my update. Thank you.
Okay. Marisol.
Sure, I'll, I'll go. Uh, back on July twenty-fifth, I, uh, made a presentation to the Real Estate Management Association, similar to what Lauren did here. Uh, it was a very, uh, you know, big audience, about a hundred people. Uh, they had a couple of good questions, but it was a little rushed for time, and so I had to kind of power through it pretty quick. Then on the twenty-sixth of July, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Business Roundtable. That one was on, uh, artificial intelligence, fascinating presentation. Everybody was, you know, it, the questions were fantastic, the panelists were fantastic, and I want to thank the, the chamber again for continuing, continuing to host those, uh, roundtables. On the first of August, I was at the senior barbecue over at the Senior Center, uh, the second one for the summer. Uh, we had probably well over a hundred people attend that event, and, uh, very well done, um, by the Senior Center and our, our Parks and Community staff. Uh, let's see, then on, uh, the fourth of August, uh, was the summer concert, the final one for the season, Pride and Joy. I don't think I've ever seen so many people at one of our summer concerts. Maybe there has been, uh, but certainly I've never seen that many people out on the, the dance floor, uh, dancing all at one time. It was incredible, uh, and a great way to, to end the summer, a very popular band with Pride and Joy. Then, let's see, on the fifth, I mentioned the senior advisory committee meeting, and, uh, you know, I mentioned the, uh, Belmont Village, they gave a presentation on that, and, uh, they also talked about National Senior Center Month, and, uh, then they had some discussions on, uh, setting up some visits to some, some of the other local, uh, senior advisory, uh, uh, centers, uh, in the Tri-Valley area. And, uh, then they talked about their upcoming, uh, senior advisory committee goal-setting workshop. Let's see, then, uh, oh, I'm, I, on August second, I attended the MCE technical meeting, and, uh, the, most of the discussion was about the Diablo Canyon, uh, nuclear power plant, which the, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, they had licensed that to operate, uh, until twenty-twenty-five, and then the CPUC and through different, uh, state law, uh, they extended that through twenty-thirty. Uh, but what's interesting is that by law, uh, MCE customers have to pay for the continued operation of Diablo Canyon, but MCE has not been accepting the allocations of the energy that has been produced at that location because of MCE's policy that they don't have, uh, nuclear as part of their, uh, portfolio. Uh, and all those allocations that are produced there, of course, are greenhouse gas-free, and, uh, there's a, a scarcity of greenhouse gas-free type energy, uh, in the state, is very expensive. Uh, so the discussion was on whether or not to start accepting the allocations. Customers are paying for it anyway, but, uh, will we start accepting the allocations? Uh, and that will kind of help the overall portfolio. So the recommendation of the technical committee was, uh, since customers are already paying for it, but not, kind of, we're not getting it, uh, the recommendation was to bring it forward to the full board of directors, uh, to accept the energy allocation going into the future, and that...
It saves what, forty-some million dollars, doesn't it?
It'll save a lot of money, uh, doing that.
Right to the, right to the ratepayers.
Yeah. Right to the ratepayers. Yeah. That's it. That's my report.
Okay. Marisol, let's go ahead.
Okay. Great. Um, so just a couple of things, uh, like my fellow council members, Bruce and Armstrong, I had the privilege of joining our San Ramon Police for a national night out, uh, last week on the sixth, and, uh, I was, uh, getting, I guess I could say chauffeured in some way, right, uh, by Lieutenant, uh, Lacy Palladio, who is just really a great person all around. Great job, by the way. She's a great hire, great person. She was a lot of fun. We went to three different, uh, stops and got to talk with our community members about what, you know, what their concerns are and, you know, and what, what works, doesn't work for them and what we can improve on. And it's really, these nights are really important, um, I think especially in San Ramon because public safety is really something that, over and over again, our residents express the importance of public safety here in San Ramon. So it's a great night to just really connect with community. Um, and then, as was already mentioned previously, on the Thursday, the eighth, um, we did go make appointments for teen council, which, as always, is a tough choice. Here in San Ramon, we have so much talent and so many exceptional young people. It, it, it's always a tough choice, but we did, uh, narrow it down to one person, and so we're looking forward to the work they will be doing in the coming year at the teen council. Thank you.
Scott? I went on vacation to Alaska, and if you want to see my pictures, I'll be happy to show you my pictures. Now, fabulous trip.
I, I covered, I covered some of the District One National Night Out locations.
Everybody filled in for me, it was fabulous. Eight days in southeast Alaska with bright sunshine and, and suntan lotion. They were freaked out at the sun. Great time. That's it.
Yeah. And I'm sorry I missed the night out, but you'd have spent the whole night getting me in and out of the car. Wouldn't have, you wouldn't have gone to many places. But I will tell you that, uh, council member Armstrong and I entertained the winners of the bid for lunch with the mayor, with the Blue family, Brent, Blue, Gavin and Ella. And they did something unique that I'd never seen before. They want to know how things operate, how to get something in front of the council to get things done. So you have copies of it.
Yeah.
So we called them up for public comment, they gave a presentation on, they want a museum in San Ramon. And they did a fantastic job, so now we'll be looking for a museum, city manager, because I don't know what happened to the money we had set aside, or I think we spent it.
Location, location.
Yeah. You just got three head knives, it looked like.
But, but I didn't want to bring them in for a Tuesday night when I wasn't sure when school started, but it was very interesting to see them make a presentation, make their case for a museum in San Ramon. I tell them, well, we can put it out to college. Got everything else out there.
And, and a special thanks on that, uh, visit with the Blue family to, uh, Chief Carlson and, uh, SRPD for a great tour, uh, after we gave a tour, uh, around the city staff. City staff did a great job, too, uh, talking about what they did, what their day-to-day jobs were, and then, uh, over at, uh, the police station, fun, fun tour there, flying, they were flying drones at the time, the, the armored vehicle came in, uh, after some training, and they got to do some hands-on, fun stuff, too.
No shooting?
No.
And again, thanks for the vice chair, was it her name Selma that we appointed?
Uh, yes. Yes.
So she'll be the chair after she's vice chair, and Marisol nailed it. There are just so many smart kids. It's a good thing for you that they're not running for council. Hey, well, that's it for me. Next item?
Item eleven, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.
All right.
Thank you.